Morning, us. We have, I'll have a fun amigo. Good morning.
Good morning.
We have very first the capital plan and other financial info update. Brian.
Turn it over to Lupus, he's the one that put this together, worked on it.
Morning. Just wanted to mention, so we're going to be going through the capital plan and some other financial information. So if any questions come up, just feel free to interrupt me and you can discuss those at that time. So as you all know, as part of the budget process, we develop a multi-year capital plan. All the information is developed by the departments and we compile it, put it together. Trying to come up with some ideas of how to make things work the best possible way. So this is a presentation covering that. So we've been working on this the past three months. There are going to be some changes this year. Overall, the entire capital plan spend, the total expenditures in this budget as of right now. It's a decrease of approximately seventy-three thousand dollars from the previous year. However, the levy portion of that is increasing just over a million dollars or almost thirty-eight percent. And then I've got a number of items here, just kind of calling out what some of those biggest changes are caused by. The first one on there is just price inflation itself. An example of that would be just in automobile prices that we're experiencing across the board. For example, we're budgeting eleven squad cars to get this year. And so that budget for those, for those squad cars comes in at six hundred forty-four thousand dollars. And just to give you some context behind that, in the previous budget, so the twenty-twenty-three budget for twenty-twenty-four was five hundred sixty-seven thousand dollars. So that's how much that those, the cost of each of those units has gone up year over year.
We have approximately forty squads, so we try to level that off every four years. Or every year, if you will, but they get replaced every four years. And so that's why we come up with eleven this year, it might be ten next year, or nine one year, but that's the average. So if we push these down the road, we're just piling it on top of the next year's purchase, so.
Another example of inflation is, is in the tandems themselves. So as you all know, we replaced one tandem per year. We have fourteen of them, so one every, every year to replace the entire fleet. The twenty-twenty-three budgeted dollar amount was two hundred fifty-eight thousand for twenty-twenty-four, that's now three hundred twenty thousand dollars. So these have gone up significantly over the past couple of years, the, the cost on, on the tandems themselves. Another example of some of the changes in this capital plan are just current equipment that we have, but upgraded versions of that equipment. So an example of that would be the MDTs or mobile data terminals. We're scheduled to replace twenty-two of these units. My understanding is that each deputy has one of these. And so the updated version of this includes cradle point, and now cradle point is required. If we were ever to get body cams. The life expectancy on these units is five years. So if we decide to go the way of getting body cams within the next five years, it makes sense to get these, start buying this upgraded version of the equipment now. Because similar with the squad cars, we replace a number of these every year, they're on a rolling basis. So we've got some prices in there. The upgraded version of them is sixty-seven hundred dollars. The version of that unit without cradle point would be forty-six hundred dollars per unit. So there you can see there is an increase in costs for that capability. Continuing on, there are some items in here in this capital plan that were not in previous versions of the capital plan. So the next item on here is the Public Works radios. This is sixty mobile units, twenty-four portable units, and then the building consulate. The total replacement cost on these is approximately two hundred seventy-four thousand dollars. As I said, this was not in a previous version of the capital plan. And the Public Works Department is also requesting approximately a hundred eight thousand dollars for various building maintenance projects. Not just on the Redmond Building, but on their satellite locations as well.
Lucas?
Yes.
So on the sixty mobile radios, then do we not replace those radios like we do in law enforcement? Where you're saying we have a certain number each year that we, it sounds like this is all coming due at the same time.
My understanding is that these were all purchased around the same time, and now all of these are approaching their life expectancy. And they will need to be replaced within the next few years at the latest.
So in the last two to three years, we've been replacing the sheriff's radios and mobiles. And so these were just recently brought forward. I guess to be honest with you, so they weren't on the previous.
I think you're asking if that could be spread out over even three years rather than doing sixteen.
Yes, Jess.
For their four years up.
Okay, so have it, has this come up over the last four years? Okay. You have a question.
And new radios aren't compatible with the old radios. Technology, gotta love it.
Just can't.
Well, that's how you sell more of it. You just make stuff obsolete and start with new.
I have one other question. Sheriff, do you have?
If it's somebody in the audience, they gotta come forward because nobody can hear without using a microphone. The sheriff come forward, please. Unless John's got the answer.
All right. I just have a question about body cams. Is that something that you, over the next few years, are looking at?
I would foresee us bringing that issue to the committee of the whole, probably this fall. I know it's been on the radar for a while and we talked about it. But we are prepared probably this fall to do a committee of the whole. I know there's appetite for that. And, and I think it's a good, it's a good thing for us to have for accountability and. So we, we will, in five years, I would say, yes, we will have body cameras. If it's, if it's the board's wishes, of course, but very likely we'll be putting together a committee of the whole for you folks.
And has.
Thank you, go ahead.
Has the state cleared up the, the information that we have to store, the lane? Well, and have we answered any questions around how much storage we have to have?
No, no, there's nothing real clear yet, but I'm guessing with this new legislation, there's also going to be grants coming for body cameras. Or more grants than there were last year, it was like two million dollars, it wasn't anything, but we're going to be seeing a bigger budget in, in the grant world for us, which is, to be honest, kind of what we were waiting for.
That's fair. Okay, thank you.
And it may help.
And the, and the great points are, we're, we're just planning for the future. I think if we're going to retrofit our, a brand new radio, it's just going to cost us more money in the, in the long run, so. To, to prepare for that, this is the reason the increase in the MDTs.
All right, thank you. So Jess, would you be willing to come up, please, and say it on the speaker? All right, Brian.
The, so Jess Greenwood, Public Works. The radios that Public Works is planning to replace are, have been outdated since twenty-nineteen. And the batteries that are in them are not replaceable. So we rely on these for daily use for everything that the crew does, so. It's a little bit of a necessity.
All right, and it's, you made the, Mr. Anderson made the comment about that the new radios are not compatible with the old radios. So if we all got only ten ready new radios this year, then the other fifty couldn't talk to the new ten?
I'm not sure on the nuances between the radios, but that's, I believe, the intent to replacing them all at the same time.
Okay.
I'm going to address Chad.
I'm sorry?
Chad, in the police department, the sheriff's department would be better to address that question.
And he's who we have been working with on this.
My understanding when that question's been asked before is that the new technology doesn't communicate with the old technology.
They still work, I mean, our still old ones will work as long as the equipment is functioning. But compatible between the two, no, but I think the old ones still can talk on it.
Okay.
We can still keep our handhelds at the fire department as long as they're physically work, but the new technology, of course, is.
All right, thank you, Chelsea. Sorry, Lucas, go ahead.
That's quite all right. Continuing on. Point number four on here is Parks Department expansion. The Parks Department is requesting eighty thousand dollars this year, or upcoming in twenty-twenty-four for both a fish cleaning station as well as host sites at the Lake Billsby Park. This kind of goes with the upgrades that were made, are currently being made here for the, the pavilion out there. Additionally, they're requesting another thirty thousand, or they're requesting thirty thousand dollars for the Nielsen Memorial Preserve. And then over the next five years, the Parks Department like to spend approximately one point two four million dollars between Lake Billsby Park and the Nielsen Memorial Preserve. All of these items were previously not included in the capital plan as well. Just want to point out that these are new plans being added to the capital plan. Then below that, we have some summaries, some totals, so you can see in the blue portion. Out the next five years, there's the total expenditures line item, and then below that is the total capital levy portion of that expenditures. So based off of the listing following these pages, this is, this is the sum of all those items, and then presenting the capital.
I would have two questions. One was, you had mentioned that the levy, well, the overall amount was down, the levy for that next year would be up thirty-eight percent. And what I wondered was, this was last year unusually low because of ARPA funds for the last couple of years. And is this total capital of forty-four million, one hundred eighty-nine thousand for twenty-twenty-four? If we looked over the last five years, how much roughly increased are we talking about? I mean, how, is it going up ten percent a year? Is it?
I would, I don't have the exact figure off the top of my head, but I know that the total expenditure has gone up significantly over the last couple of years.
In addition to ARPA?
Oh, I wouldn't say over the last two years, the, the total expenditures have gone up significantly. Last year, ARPA was, was a nice funding source to help pay for those items. A lot of this increases is just caused simply by price inflation.
Yep. And then the other question I had, I think somebody mentioned grants on the radios, and are there grants available for park development? I, I would think so.
You know, I've, I've posed that question, and I think it's worth looking into a little bit more. The response what I got was that for these projects, there might be. And I, I think that's just part of the, the overall process we need to continue working on, so.
That's, I mean, the grant is what got us the pavilion.
Yes, and there might be other grants as well.
Yeah, and we get money for the AIS, which put in an AIS station. And it, it all depends, it depends on what, what legislature funds. And whether it fits with what we're doing. Some of, some of the work at the Nielsen Park is just to get it to a point where we can apply for grants.
Yes.
Because it's not at all developed. It is just the woods. We have to get an entrance road and a parking area, and now after we get some of that in place, then you have the ability to apply for some grants. But till then, some of the money has to come out of county coffers to get you to that point.
So then in the green section, it breaks down the funding sources a little bit more clearly between various grants that we get. In twenty-twenty-four, there's going to be a couple items that are still going to be paid for through the ARPA funds, and then obviously the majority of it's going to be paid through levy. And then down in the orange, kind of a section on the memo, just breaks it out by specific category, what type of item it is.
Again, this was just the first brush with this. Obviously, we didn't go back and start applying other funding mechanisms that might be available and stuff. We wanted to gauge the board's reaction, I guess, on what might be a priority, and we can go back and work with the department heads.
Then continuing on, just wanted to make mention that the county itself, Levis Florida makes two debt service payments per year. The first payment is in February. That includes, includes the principal and interest portion. The second payment of the year is for the interest-only payment. Based on our current debt load, our final payments will be made in February of twenty-thirty. So then at the top of the next page, you can see a chart showing our current debt service payments. Note, there's a drop in twenty, between twenty-six, two thousand twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven. And that's because we have a balloon payment of one point two nine five million, of which we're levying for each year. According to that debt agreement, we must have a sinking fund that would save that money and then make one ultimate principal payment. So that's why there's that slight drop, or it's approximately two hundred thousand or a hundred thousand there. Then continuing on to the, some fund updates. Just want to give you an update on the building contingency fund, so the actual fund balance in that is one million, two hundred forty-seven thousand, three hundred sixty-one. At the last board meeting, it was approved that government center rooftop units and then the government center master plan implementation phase one. Those costs would be paid for using the building contingency funds. If those, excuse me, if those projects come in at full cost, that contingency fund would have a remaining balance of eight hundred seventy-one thousand dollars left in it. Just wanted to make that point. And then we will be discussing that a little bit later during the board meeting when we cover some ARPA updates as well. Then continuing on. The general revenue fund, road and bridge fund, health and human services fund, and waste management fund all have fund balance ratios that are above the county's stated policy. And so replenishing reserves such as building contingencies or paying for some capital items are potentially used for some of these funds in order to bring the funds ratios in line with the stated policies. The general revenue fund, the actual, and these numbers come from the audited financial statements that were recently competed, completed. They're from that as well as the twenty-twenty-three approved budget. So that's where the numbers come from. So the actual for the general revenue fund is at fifty-one point one percent, which is just slightly above the target maximum of fifty percent. The road and bridge fund, and now on this one, I need to point out that for the road and bridge fund and health and human services funds, these do not, these numbers do not include the reserves that are set up by management. And so under the road and bridge fund, there is also one point two five million set aside for right away and approximately ninety-five hundred dollars set for township turnbacks. So it's not in the memo, but this is important to note, so if you could write this down just for later on. The actual percentage here for the road and bridge fund is sixty-nine point four percent, not the seventy-five point four on there, which is above the target ratio. However, in the road and bridge fund, this balance can fluctuate year to year based off of those construction projects that are scheduled for the following year.
And we've delayed some major construction projects this year that will come up next year, that will eat up chunks of that.
And.
And the capital plan for the road and bridge fund was already presented this year for this year and the next four years following too, so.
And then for the health and human services fund, I want to point out that there is approximately eight point eight million dollars set aside for reserves. And these, this number was presented back in February to the HHS board. All the specifics in there, it's made up of various contingencies. For example, if the federal state government decides to cut their funding, that, that sort of thing. So adjusting for that, the health and human services actual ratio, it does fall in at forty percent. So the number that I have on there is, it is high compared to what it is actually after the reserves. The waste management fund, the actual on there is a hundred and one percent, which is obviously well above the target. However, I do want to mention on that one. There, I know there have been discussions about the transfer station and potential need for, for some money if when that landfill closes down, we might need to, to come up with some cash, so. So there is some extra money sitting in there, but some money will need to be come up with for that as well.
And that's for that Wanamango landfill that's filling up rather quickly.
That money can't be used for anything else, though, correct?
It's, the money that's in this fund balance, it is, it is the waste management funds money. So I would think it would make sense to, to keep that in there, because we know what the, in the future, there will be a liability for that, that landfill, for closing it down.
All right, sorry, walk me through that. I thought that that's what the closed landfill.
That was the other land.
There's two different landfills. There was the sanitary landfill here off of Ben Street.
Okay.
Then there's also the.
Demolition.
Yes, the demolition landfill in Wanamango, and so that one, and I'm sure Jess could speak much more clearly about this than I could, but my understanding is that that has been filling up more rapidly than what was expected. And so that one will become full and it will need to be closed down at some point, and there will be a liability associated with that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. So at this time, staff does not know the tax rate impact on the county residents, as the tax capacity figures are not available until September. We're going to continue working with all the departments to refine this plan, and we'll bring back another capital fact, capital plan back during the budget process. And really, we're just kind of looking for some, some input from board members of what are you looking for with this capital plan? Do you have an interaction on specific items?
All right. All right, questions or comments from the board?
So is this, as I look at our budget from last year, twenty-three budget, there's one point three million in revenues that went into the capital plan. Does this reflect any revenues for the capital plan? Or is this just expense?
So if we go up to the chart, so the green section on this chart, this breaks all of the expenditures down by specific funding or revenue source. So on there, you can see the capital levy portion of this is three point six seven million dollars. And then two hundred twenty-five thousand would be paid for through the ARPA plan on previously approved projects.
So basically, we've almost at least nine hundred thousand dollars of revenue that we were, had last year in twenty-three's budget is not going to show up in twenty-four's budget. You, you take all the numbers other than the levy and add those together compared to the one point three million in revenues we had last, in the last budget, we've lost revenues to that amount.
Well, I guess I, I don't know where, what source you're looking at for the revenues.
I'm looking at the budget we approved last year, had a capital plan of three point nine eight eight four forty-one with revenues of one point three, roughly one point three million.
I think he's, he will have to go back and take a look what we're thinking, what line item, I guess, we don't know. We didn't have last year's in front of us, but to see.
Looking at the approved levy from twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-three.
There's, there's ARPA dollars in there in fund balance, that's probably the difference.
That's what I'm wondering. Because Sue asked about ARPA dollars, and that's what I'm wondering, if we went back and looked at where all those revenue sources were last year, what is missing from that?
It's got to be at least.
We don't have for this twenty-four budget.
It's got to be at least those two things. ARPA definitely helped everybody's budget the last two years.
Yeah, the, in the capital plan last year, the ARPA budget made up, it was seven or eight hundred thousand dollars of the total.
That's what it is. Okay.
That was.
So that kind of answers Sue's question about where the, that supplanted levy dollars.
Got it.
So are there some specific things you want to promote?
No, I think if you guys have no other comments, you know, we're going to bring this back, obviously, and be working on it, so. And I think, obviously, one of the things that you talked about with the sheriff too, was to bring back the body cam to see what direction we might be headed or not, I guess, in the near future, so.
Do we have any idea what it costs to do body cameras? I mean, if you were to say so much a camera, do we have any idea? And that's just the cost of the equipment, not the cost of storage and everything else that comes along, on your goal there. Yeah.
I, I think it'd be better if we flush all those costs, bring it back rather than kind of guess in a meeting.
Well, it certainly seems to me that that is the direction that law enforcement is going, so I'm hoping that the state of Minnesota will.
Well, that's, that, I mean, that's.
With figuring out a way that everybody can get them.
I mean, we've talked about body cameras for six, eight years, and, and it's always been, there's no guidance from the state. What it is you have to store, what it is you have to keep, and maybe going to the, the cloud with storage will help that, but my guess is it'll cost a ton of money there too.
It's not free.
It's not free.
No, but I mean, other departments managed to figure out what to do and what to keep and where to put it.
It's a whole lot easier when the state says, this is what you have to do, and you don't do twenty percent, forty percent more.
That's true.
And pay for it, and it's not worth having. That's why I've always kind of been of the thought, the state's got to give us some more direction.
I, I have a fund balance question. So, you know, I can see ideally you might want every fund balance at the maximum recommended amount, okay? But, and not the minimum recommended amount, but do we really need to have every one of those fund balances at the maximum? Or would they be two percent below the maximum, and that would be fine? That, that's kind of what I meant. And I'm not suggesting we do it, I'm just trying to get information so I understand it.
Yeah, no, if they're two percent below or something like that, I mean, I wasn't a.
But below them.
Economy went down, I mean, we were at like twenty-three percent, you know, so you had to go back and readjust the budget, but we went from forty down pretty quick, and then you work your way back up, so. It's nice to have something healthy in there, and if you're kind of at the top, it's nice to keep it there, because I know the, the boards probably work pretty hard to keep that there, so.
So ideally, you, you keep it at the max, ideally.
Ideally, yes, absolutely.
Two percent is not that big a deal.
No.
That's what I'm thinking, that it's not that big.
And again, some of that stuff would be like when Tim comes forward and needs something for an elevator or for a roof or a rooftop unit that broke. That's what ideally some of that is for. However, we have a building contingency fund for that as well, so.
So I think everybody's aware, we already have planned a lot for improving the benefits and salaries of everybody working for the county, and that's going to limit our ability some to do a lot of other things. So as a board, I think we need to know what the options are to do the best we can, but not overburden the taxpayers.
The preference would be to stay at the very, very top, but there's no reason we have to go above the maximum, correct?
Well, and I think you said there's no reason we have to be at the very top on every.
You want to be near it.
Near it, but forty-eight percent is probably fine, is what you were saying, yeah, on the general fund.
Sheriff, did you want to say something?
I'll just put this on your radar. We did do estimates for body cameras in June fifteenth of twenty-twenty-two, so a year ago was estimated at three hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Three thirty-five?
Three hundred and thirty-one thousand.
Three thirty-one.
So we're a year later. Just to just, yeah, so sad twenty percent. We did have.
And is that with existing staff managing the system?
Yes. Yeah. So that's where we're at.
So that's where we're at, and the numbers will be different when we come back this fall, so.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And then Briggs needs to switch over presentations, and then we'll be on to the superintendents.